Hello, everybody, and welcome to your zoning board of appeals for February 19th, 2019. February is flying. We have three hearings this evening. First one is case number 1901, Zero Morris Street, or Morse, excuse me, Morse Avenue. It's a new construction proposal on a vacant lot up there. It's the second time that they've been in. They've revised their application. And the second hearing is 61 Endicott Street. There's a proposal for a fitness facility down at the Market Place down there, the former Zimbalz, which is now a mixed use of a bunch of different things. And then the last case is 253 Manhattan Street. It's the St. Catherine's Convent proposal that's being proposed to be made into condominiums. So up first is Counselor Thomas Brady on behalf of Thomas Powers for Morse Avenue. Tom, you've given me the affidavit. I see the affidavit is in order. Mr. Brady and Mr. Riley, if you could read the advertisements. We're looking for the 31st of January and the 7th of February.
January 27th.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. The affidavit is in order. The advertisements are in order. I'll read the public notice, and then, Mr. Brady, you know the routine. I'll give you the floor. Make your proposal. Any testimony that you want to bring into it, and then we'll open it up to the board, and then we'll open it up to the neighborhood. And anybody who wants to be heard on that. So give me one second here. Notice is hereby given the Board of Appeal. The town of Norwood will hold a public hearing in room 12 of the municipal office building on February 19th, 2019, at 7:15 PM on the request of Thomas J. Powers, trustee of Zero Morris Avenue Realty Trust, case number 1901, with respect to the property located at Zero Morris Ave. in a G residential district. The application requests a variance under the general laws of the Commonwealth of Mass to allow, one, minimum lot frontage for Lot 44 on the plan filed with the application of 70 feet on Morse Ave. when the required minimum frontage in a G residential district zone is 90 feet pursuant to Section 4 dimensional requirements of the town of Norwood zoning bylaws. Variance number two is a minimum lot area for Lot 44 in the plan filed with the application, as Lot 44 contains 6,331 square feet of land, where 10,000 square feet of land is required in a general residential zone pursuant to Section 4 of the town of Norwood zoning bylaws. Plans are on file with the application in the office of the ZBA and may be viewed during normal working hours, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4 p.m. All the statutory requirements having been met, I hereby declare the hearing open. Mr. Brady, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Mulvihill. Tom Brady, on behalf of Mr. Thomas Powers, the owner of the lot shown on the plan, which is depicted as Lot 44. This lot was created in 1896 as part of our residential subdivision plan in 1896. A number of the houses have been built on the lot shown on that plan. That plan is attached to my brief that I filed with you, and it's the 6,331 square foot Lot 44 on that. That lot, when it was created, has 70 feet of frontage, 6,331 square feet of land, and we are currently looking, since the zoning bylaws have changed, to obtain a variance for street frontage, as we only have 70 feet, and we're required to have 100 feet. And for area, we're required to have 10,000 square feet, and we have 6,331 square feet. Now, this lot, here's pictures of it. It's full of ledge. You can see the ledge did the best to get that. This is the lot on Morse Street. So there will need to be some blasting. And I brought you reports from the person who will do that, how he will go out there, contact the neighbors, take photographs. He's fully insured. I'll provide that to your board. The whole surrounding neighborhood is comprised of these 6,500 square foot lots. This lot just wasn't built upon due to, I believe, the ledge that was on the site. So due to the soil conditions, the ledge, this property was prevented from being developed. But at this point in time, removing ledge is not a big deal. Mass General Laws 48, Section 10, says the permit granting authority, that's your board, Mr. Mulvihill, shall have the power, after public hearing, to grant a variance from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance, where such permit granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, so owing to the condition which is the ledge, it specifically affects this land. It doesn't affect the neighboring properties. So therefore, it is within your jurisdiction to grant the variances that we have requested, because it was always the intent from this 1896 plan to have a home being built on this. From the last hearing, we narrowed the house. We made a smaller house. And here is a picture of the house. And I believe it's approximately 2,200 square feet. It does not have a garage.
What was the last proposal, Tom?
The last proposal?
It was four bedroom.
Square footage, right?
I believe it was like 2,600. That was the size of the last house that we, that was the last one, not this one.
Is that a picture of what it was going to be before?
Yeah, this was, we were gonna do this. It was gonna have a third floor walk-up attic.
Okay.
Which, a lot of those houses in that neighborhood do have it, you know.
But now you've eliminated, now you've eliminated and downsized.
It'll be a lot lower for the neighbors. It won't look like it's out of place.
Okay. Anything further, Tom?
No, just requesting your help in granting these variances for Mr. Powers, so he can build this house on the lot.
Is the same letter from the demolition blasting company that was in the file before?
That's correct, yep.
So he definitely has to blast. He can't pneumatic hammer it out?
He, he may, I mean, he wants the pneumatic hammer, but if he gets in there, and there's something he can't, he can't just see it from the top, yeah.
Mr. Riley?
But it's not definitive going in that he has to blast.
That's correct.
But he might.
Yeah, but, yeah, but for the most part, it's gonna, he tells me it's gonna be pneumatic hammering, but.
Okay.
Just by way of history for the folks in the audience and on the TV, the applicant was in here two months ago, Tom?
Yes, November 13th.
Two months ago, three months ago, with a proposal seeking the same request from lot area and frontage area, but with a larger proposal. Can I see that picture, Tom?
Yep.
This was the previous proposal, 2,600, and now he's shrunk it down to 2,200 after comments from the board and from the neighborhood that does not think the house would fit. So the applicant heard the concerns of the board, and has now got a 2,200 square foot proposal. I'll hear from the board members. Mr. Riley, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I, I still have the reservations that I've always had with respect to area, and I think it applies here. However, that having been said, one of the things that I appreciate very much from my time on the board is when members, or applicants who come before the board, I should say, seek to cooperate with the board, and having been given instructions or advice, or whatever you want to call it, by the board at one hearing, they comply with that and come back with something that they believe is in accordance with what the board was seeking. And that has occurred in this case, and I compliment the applicant on doing that. And I'm much more favorably inclined toward the proposition based upon the amendments and changes that the applicant has made with respect to the house.
Thanks, Mr. Riley. We'll go to Mrs. Anderson, and then Mr. Brady and Mr. Perry.
I too think it looks like it will fit in there. My always major concern is the blasting. You can guarantee all of the neighbors that if there's a single crack, that it will be taken care of.
Sure.
Because that can be a really serious issue.
Oh, good. Good, no doubt.
And also, are there, have there been opposition to this, and why?
Um.
From the neighborhood? You've checked with all the neighbors?
The last meeting, that they didn't like the size of the house.
Okay.
They thought it was too tall.
All right. But I.
And that results in?
I would have a concern about the blasting, but if that.
We're gonna try to avoid that as much as we can. As I said, I spoke to the contractor.
But if, if.
Yep.
Then you will repair any damage done.
Yes, yep.
But he has certain, how he explained it to me, is certain protocols. If he has to blast, he has to go out and, forward to his insurance company requires a video to go to the house, to see anything.
All houses around.
It's for his protection, and it's for the neighbor's protection.
Well, I think he has to do it anyway.
Yeah.
I understand that, but there's always that little.
Oh, sure.
Let me juggle the order, Tom. I want to ask Jack Perry a question. Jack, you've dealt with this numerous times in the projects you've handled as far as the blasting. The absolute, actual protocol is what?
It can be controlled. It's not, it doesn't mean the site can't be developed. We've had another project we've done on ledge, and it's monitored. And the concern, of course, is the neighbors, the imboding properties, that nobody gets cracks in foundations and that type of thing. But, I mean, I was surprised with the lot when I first saw it. First of all, I never knew where the street was, and I was born in Norwood Hospital.
You were down on Morse Street.
It took me three days, I think, riding around Norwood, looking for, I kept going up and down.
Couldn't see where Morse Street, where is it?
But anyway, I'm not concerned. That can really be controlled.
Yeah, I think, it's true. I think, as I recall, you know, dealing with other blasting cases from time to time, they, you know, if it turns out they have to do this, I think they have to go around to every one of the neighbors, let them know exactly when it's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah, they have to be informed, actually. I think it's within 200 feet.
There's a whole list of things they have to do.
They have to be notified.
Exactly. There's a whole.
Videoing. It can be controlled.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
But they have to go through all that.
Do you have any questions, Jack, before I?
Not really. Like I said, I was familiar with it last time. It just took me a while to even find the street. But I, my first comment when I saw it was the ledge issue, you know. And then again, we've done projects on ledge, which just didn't have basements. But you're planning a basement, correct?
It'll be a walkout basement?
Yeah, yeah, because the sites feel steep.
Probably didn't have to send people up to Morse Ave. looking for you, so I mean, glad you made it.
I was there a whole day.
Right, not to mention.
I couldn't find this lot. No, but anyway.
Thanks, Mr. Perry. Mr. Brady?
I think everybody nailed it. Phil with the compromise issue absolutely married, especially with the concern of the neighbors, and Jack with the expertise. So I'd be anxious to hear the audience about this fish and the penny. Thank you, members. Seeing no further comment from the board, we'll open it up to the, to the audience. Anybody want to be heard on case number 1901, Morse Avenue? Please raise your hand and be recognized.
Ed Poniatowski, I live at 28th Morse Avenue.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to point out, they haven't moved anywhere on either one of these waivers. They still need 37% for area and 22% for frontage.
Okay. 90 feet is required. They're providing 70, and they need 10,000 for area, and they're providing 63, uh, what is it, Tom? 63?
6,331.
6,331. Anybody else? Sir?
I live at 68, so it's the property directly behind the lot.
On Howard?
Yeah, on Howard Street.
Yep. What's your name, sir, just for the record?
Ryan Nie.
Mr. Nie, thank you.
So we're concerned about the, obviously, the size of the variance, and just how the property will drain into our property now, because it is, we are, our backyard does sit below. So we're concerned that once all that ledge is removed, and all the trees and everything is removed, how the water is not gonna flow into our property and cause like flooding in our backyard.
Well, legally, he can't shed his water. Or I can't shed my water on my neighbor's lot. So, Mr. Powers, how do you answer that?
Shed it out towards the street, on Morse Street. Storm drains. We'll go up towards the cul-de-sac.
Did you hear that, Mr. Nie?
No, I'm sorry.
All the water will be directed out towards Morse Street.
So there's a drain on, on Morse Street that it flows into, instead of just?
There's storm drains on Morse Street.
Okay. Additional concerns is obviously the blasting. We have, we have an infant, and worried obviously about damage to the property itself, because we are obviously probably the closest neighbor to.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a project coming, actually, coming in front of the board in March, and it's a half a basement with ledge underneath it. And my guy has told me that the predominance of ledge shale in Norwood can be done with one of the oh-my-god pneumatic hammers. Now, they have smaller ones that you could rent at the shop down on Route 1 or whatever, but some of these bigger contractors come in with the enormous machine and can propel that pneumatic hammer to break this stuff up, unless it's really uncooperative. And if it's uncooperative, as Mr. Brady said, the company's reserving the right to possibly get in there and blast. But as it's been asked of the membership, they will come in, they'll knock on your door, introduce themselves, videotape room to room, picture room to room, attest, it's almost like an apartment condition form before you rent. When they left the property at 68 Howard Street, there wasn't any cracks in the ceiling, there wasn't any cracks in the doors, no cracks in the walls. It's all videotaped and audio, and then you sign, and they sign, and then you leave. After they blast, if you see a crack or anything, their insurance companies, you know, indemnifying them, they'll pay for anything.
Okay.
It's all on us.
And those, and those ledge, and then the ledges themselves, now, you only see some of it above ground, obviously, but I don't know if it was looked into, whether that comes onto our property as well, or how, what the impact with that would be.
It's probably a vein. It probably runs through node, because I remember when the two condos, or the two duplexes were built up there. I believe it was Mr. Carl Antonio. I can't remember. Remanda, I asked you last time, who the developer was up there. I think he had to pneumatic hammer that property pretty well up there. And it runs up to Bobby Dempsey's property, up through that Fulton Street, played all the way up into the top of Dempsey Hill there. What does it do underneath the ground? I don't know. You'd have to, the company would have to verse you on that. It's gonna be doing the excavating. But, you know, if you're, the house is gonna be, it's proposed to be 30 feet from the rear yard. And, did you buy the Naughton property? You're at 68?
68, yes.
Yeah. So then you're a good 30 feet from the rear property line, too. So, again, I can't speak to what it does under the ground.
It's gonna be a walkout basement, so most of the jackhammer will be in the front of the house right here. There won't be any jackhammering in the back.
Okay. So again, the company will be at your front door talking to you about this.
Okay. In terms of if there is damage, I mean, we have to go through a claims process?
Well, yeah. What will they'll do is, again, if you have the slightest crack, and then you just call them up, they come back in, they say, hey, listen, here's the video, show me where the crack is. And the crack wasn't there before the excavation. The company's fully indemnified. They completely just covered, and then they just, you know, pay.
And then the final point, which is for privacy, obviously, we'll now have a house that's sitting above us looking back. And whenever we get on our, on our back deck or look out there, there'll be a house now that'll look right into us. I don't know if there was a fence planned?
Do you have a fence planned, Mr. Powers, or any buffering?
Yeah, I'd be willing to give you guys a fence.
I think that's definitely something we're very concerned about, so.
Because our yards, it's just, it's hard to picture with a lot that small and a house with that square footage, how it's gonna be for us, so.
We can also require a fence as a condition.
Yeah.
That would certainly be something.
Any plantings, Tom, that you could do?
Yeah, we could do evergreens, too.
Yeah, we could require buffering and fencing.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Nie?
No, this is not, it's just my concern about having, it's hard to picture where, like.
And you are the other half of the nie equation?
My wife.
Yeah, sorry. In real, in real life, it's hard to picture.
Sure is, yeah.
Our yard is very small.
I got.
And I'm just picturing, like, them having zero yards, and I just, I don't know how that's like appealing for either tenant.
No, I understand. It's something that you're gonna have to conceptualize. I mean, again, you'd have to talk to Mr. Powers, or what we can put on here as an order of condition.
We can decide what you guys want to do. We can blend the landscaping together.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want it to be, you know, so we can.
There's no fence then, now?
Yeah, right.
There's no fence in the property line now?
Yeah.
Not on that, on the either side. There are fences, but not one of us.
What on either side? Do you have chain link, a cedar?
There's chain link, and then there's a very small amount of vinyl on the other side.
Okay, so then, yes.
Well, I think we require something other than chain link. We require something to provide some privacy.
To match, yeah.
Chain link wouldn't do much for you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Nie. Anybody else?
I would just like.
One, one time?
Poniatowski again.
Sure.
I'm hard of hearing.
No worries.
No blasting.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Anybody else want to be heard? Going once, twice? Pleasure of the board.
I think we've heard pretty much all we need to hear. Move to closing.
So moved by Mr. Riley, seconded by Mr. Perry. All those in favor? Posed? Five to nothing. And what is the pleasure of the board to the proposal on Morse Avenue? You want to vote? You want to give it a couple of weeks, or what do you want to do?
I think we've heard enough.
I'll move to a call.
It's the second time around.
I'll move to a call.
Mr. Brady has made a motion to approve a 2,200 square foot colonial depicted in the picture, put forth by Counselor Brady and Mr. Powers, to be put on Lot 44 as specified in his application. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. On that, on that motion, do we put in the verbiage for the fence and shrubbery or something along them?
I think, I think we should include a condition to provide sufficient fencing and plantings in the rear, so as to provide some privacy to the people in back. And although I think it basically would just be restating the law, I think it, we might make, want to make some reference to the fact that, that any damages that might be caused by blasting would, would be absorbed and taken care of in some fashion.
So that's a six-foot-high vinyl?
I would think that would be appropriate.
Mr. Nie, is it a six-foot-high vinyl fence on that side?
Yes.
Six feet high?
Yep.
So it's in keeping with the vinyl fence that the Nies will show you?
All right, I think that would be appropriate.
Mr. Powers, any shrubbery that you could put back there that might grow over the fence? We won't make an order of conditions, but if you could throw two or three evergreens or something that might grow above the fence, you know, I'd be worried for it.
Whatever.
So, so, Remanda, did you get that wording? Okay, so we've got, we've got the proposal that's been made by Mr. Brady and seconded by Mr. Perry to approve Mr. Riley's verbiage of the fence being put up on the rear of the property with some intermittent shrubbery put in the back there, six-foot-high vinyl to be matching the nie property. Okay. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Five to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And then, obviously, if you could follow, Mr. Powers, if you could follow, or follow up with the, some sort of rules and regs from the blasting company to try, if in fact you have to blast.
Yeah, hopefully with your jackhammer.
Thank you.
I'd love to see him. Does he ever come up this way?
Once in a while.
Next year, you gotta do that.
He does something for Angela.
Okay.
And Christine, this lady, this new lady, they're in the.
Oh, no, I just.
Having a bit of vibration.
How many, how many she goes?
They have a lot of spider cracks on the doors, you know, windows.
Yeah.
I guess next year.
Yeah.
Seriously, yeah.
Anyway. Last year, they did the key, and the next year. Okay, folks, we've got another hearing at 61 Endicott Street, case number 1827.
So is I.
Yes.
Mr. Jones, have a seat, please.
I know.
So what's your opinion?
Well, as long as he's guaranteed, it's a real estate or anything, it's fine.
And, 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 and what is his issue?
Oh, yeah.
Fully insured, closed on blast, I'm sure.
Whatever.
I don't know, I don't know.
Do you have your advertisements, Mr. Jones, and your affidavit?
Yes.
That to me is a primary concern.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree 100% on that one.
And the proof of the ads, and we're good to go. This is Endicott Street, the Fitness Center.
This is the affidavit there, the one, and the other.
Is the lawyer?
Yeah, he's my negotiator.
Lawyer's name. You're making me nervous.
She looks tough.
I'm a boy, actually.
Sorry, pardon me.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, no worries. So, we've got, we're looking for February 5th, Mr. Perry, and February 14th. I'll look up February 14th, Jack. You look up February 5th.
I can't, because you only gave him the seven to say February 14th page.
Yeah, so you look up the 14th. Yeah. I've got the set.
Oh.
5th is all set.
I'll look up the 5th if you give me that page.
No, I've got the 5th.
Thank you.
Give me that. Give me a hard time. All right. So the 5th and the 14th of February have been reviewed by myself and Mr. Perry. The affidavit is in order. Mr. Jones, I'm gonna read the public notice.
Mr. Perry wouldn't review anything, did he?
Yeah, he looked at it. And then we'll open up the hearing. You'll make your case, and then the board will question you, and then we'll open it up to the, to the neighborhood. Notice is hereby given the Board of Appeal. The town of Norwood will hold a public hearing in room 12 of the municipal office building on February 19th, 2019, at 7:30 PM on the request of case number 1827 with respect to property located on 61 Endicott Street in a manufacturing M district. The application requests a special permit under Section 3, Table F, line 10 of the zoning bylaw, to allow a fitness facility at 61 Endicott Street in Norwood, building number 34, which is currently in a Zone M. No changes to structure or additions. Plans are on file with the application in the office of the ZBA. Can be viewed during normal working hours, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4, 8 a.m., 4 p.m. All the statutory requirements haven't been met. I hereby declare the hearing open. Mr. Daniel Jones, you're the applicant. And you are the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So go ahead and make your case, sir, and then we'll question you.
So I have been looking at multiple properties in Norwood. I specifically wanted to open up in Norwood. I live in Canton. I owned a previous fitness facility in Canton. I was a co-owner there, and I was looking to do my own business. And Norwood was, was a place that I really wanted to open up. It, that took a winding road, but luckily I found the management team at the Norwood Commerce Center. And it was a very good fit for the concept of my business and what they are kind of hosting and represent there. As far as what I would bring to the Norwood Commerce Center and Norwood, I would obviously be bringing business, and the, you know, the additional foot traffic would be symbiotic and helping the other businesses that are, that are there. It's a separate building, offset in the back with its own parking lot, so it has an easy traffic flow, and it wouldn't conflict with the main operations of the Norwood Commerce Center, which is mostly about arts and crafts and, and a lot of salvage and antiquing. So I'm kind of off in that back corner. I have my own parking lot, which would probably need to be striped, but there's ample parking for that. And I think the most important thing, which might be peripheral at this, this hearing, is obviously bringing, you know, health and wellness is something that I've been doing for a long time, and I would like to continue doing with different demographics, whether it be youth, and to the elderly, and everybody in between, you know. So that's, that's in a nutshell, if you have any questions.
So is that building number 34 vacant now? Is there an auto body placed in there? Isn't there a SOB auto body down there, something wrong?
There's, there's an old Jaguar dealer. That's a different building. There is, it right adjacent, it shares a wall in, in the same structure, is a manufacturing, auto fabrication. I'm unclear with the exact, but it's definitely auto-related.
How many square feet would your proposal be?
It's just over 7,500.
7,500? So one floor?
One floor.
And what would it consist of? Machines, aerobics? What, when you say fitness, what do you mean?
So it's primarily a CrossFit gym.
CrossFit.
So it's, it's pretty bare bones. They kind of say that, you know, you are the piece of equipment.
Yep.
But there would be barbells and weights, kettlebells and that sort of thing, a pull-up rig. And the hours of operation start, you know, there's generally an early morning class before people, the working people go off to have their nine-to-five business day. So there's an early morning class, and it kind of shuts down, there might be a nine o'clock or a 10 o'clock class, and again, shuts down for most of the midday. And then once people start getting off of work, generally, there's about a 4, 5, and a 6 p.m. class. And that's really.
So when would the place shut down?
After the last class would probably be 7, 8 p.m.
Now, do you have, is it, I mean, were your other proposals that you ran, or the last one you ran, was it a CrossFit?
In Canton, yes.
Okay. So over here, next to Lewis', is a lot of these CrossFit folks and guys and gals run around the block continuously. Would your, your proposal be doing the same, running through the neighborhood? Would your, your proposal be doing the same, running through the neighborhood?
Not...
Part of your training, or is that just...
Not through the neighborhood necessarily, but there, because of the location of, of building 34, in the, in that back corner, there's, there's, there's the empty parking lot, and then it kind of goes off into, I think there's a train tracks and, and something that, basically there's nothing back there.
Yep.
So yes, there, there would be running, and, you know, obviously the last thing I want to do is harm my members, you know, put them in harm's way or anything, in any sort of traffic flow. I, you know, but the beauty of that building is that there's multiple options, multiple routes that you can take.
What would a proposal like this, size-wise, hope to acquire as far as a membership count?
Um, we had over 90 members in the location in Canton. That was a 5,000-square-foot facility. My problem with that was that I was running out of space for my members if there was a, it was a big class, if it was a, we do a partner workout.
Are you a personal trainer?
Yes, yes.
So then would there be private, personal training type of...
During the off-hours.
Off-hours?
Yes.
So then the last, last class would be seven at night, and then would the, it's not like a 24-hour fitness facility like over here on Lydick Street?
Correct, it is not.
You shut the door, and you're, you're the one who has the key and...
Yes.
Okay, so the members don't have keys?
No.
Any aerobics or loud music that's going to be emanating from there?
There would, music is part of the, of the concept. The last thing I want to do is be a bad neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
I mentioned that right off before any lease was drafted, and it is in the lease that it is part of my business operations, that, you know, music is played, but it's to be played at an appropriate level. And again, I, the last thing I want to be is, is a bad neighbor.
You're going to have noise outside the place?
Well, luckily there's, there's that manufacturing, auto fabricating, they create similar, you know, noises and...
This, this is inside the building.
Oh, I know where it is.
Yeah, no, this is inside.
I know exactly where it is.
As far as the noise outside the building, it'd be minimal to none.
Yeah, yeah. No, the music is inside the building, so, because when you walk by this one, you can hear the radio going. The, uh, the other part is more of a building aspect. That's a hundred-plus-year-old building down there. How many pounds of weights are you going to have in there for, are you going to be on a basement underneath you, and is it structurally sound enough to fit something like that? Because again...
It is, it's a cool old building. I'm kind of a sucker for old buildings like that. Um, I, I love the beam. Luckily, it, it's just a cement or in parts of a brick floor. There is no cellar, there is, there is no basement.
So you're on the ground floor?
Correct.
So it's just wide-open ceilings and everything?
It, yes, there's, there's support posts running down the middle, but they're 10 feet apart.
Okay. So this is a, this is a, a piece of property here in town, Mr. Jones, that we've been watching very closely, and we're, we're excited, but we're cautious on a lot of applications that come forward because of the neighborhood down there. Endicott Street, some of those families been down there 50, 60 years. Harley Drive, all that area down there. And when this redevelopment proposal was brought forward along with the condos down there, it was very involved with the neighborhood, very involved with the town and this board. And I want to say that this is in keeping to a degree because the predominance of development down there, in that enclave down there, shops, mom and pop, they, you know, they have the Norwood marketplace. Now we're looking at a brewery down there, or some other type of entertainment venues, gay-type of permitting. I don't think that this is something that is out of the scope of what I think we're trying to do down there, or trying to watch down there. I, I'm interested to hear from some of the members of the board, and I see my brother, Mr. Yosko here, who's a longtime resident down there and was very involved in the neighborhood. So I'm interested to hear what other folks have to say. So, Mr. Jones, are you set?
Well, I, I think just adding to that point is that, you know, it is an attraction. Uh, it's something that, that is kind of community-generated.
And then how, how did it come that you were in front of us here? Did you speak to the building inspector?
Yes, and so I, I found out that it, in order to get a fitness facility in there, I needed to change, change the permit. I obviously wanted to do everything right, by the book. Ramada's been a very big help for me because this is all new to me, so I just wanted to make sure I just did it right. But, you know, it, it, as far as like the brewery and, and the people coming in on the weekends, you know, I do feel like it, it fits in with that, you know, kind of community aspect and a vibrant...
Okay. Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
My recollection, Mr. Chairman, that apropos of your concerns about watching this area carefully, so far, so far as I am aware, we've only allowed various businesses to operate on a very limited basis on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. I don't think we've had any application come before us, unless I'm missing something, that planned on operating every day in the week.
Seven days.
Seven day, or whatever it is. So it seems to me that rather than being necessarily in keeping with what we've done before, that this would represent a significant departure from what we have done before. And I think that's a matter that we have to give some serious thought to. I, I can picture any number of these crafts and antique dealers and other people that are down there suddenly returning to us and saying, well, now wait a minute, you just let somebody else come in here five, six, seven days a week? How about us? And the next thing you know, it's a full-scale business operation going on down there. So I, I think we have to be fairly cautious about that. And I, I have a number of other concerns about it, but I wanted to address that point, but I, when the time comes, I do have some questions for the applicant about it.
Go ahead, while you get the floor, go ahead.
What time did you say this was going to open? I don't think I heard a number of...
It, um, it's membership-generated. The cash flow is, is generated by, by membership. So in the lease negotiations, there was a discussion of delayed rent so that I could have time to, to build the, the, the membership core, right? So it was discussed to have a five-months delayed rent. So that would be, at the beginning of the summer was, would be the hard open, and end of April, middle of April would be kind of a, a soft open. And a toned-down class structure, fewer classes in, during that soft open period. And then during the, at the summertime, it would be the, the full class options. I should mention, Monday through Friday would be those classes, those classes that I had mentioned, the early morning into the, on the weekends, it would just be two morning classes done by 10.
I don't think I heard an answer to my question. What, what time would this open?
Yeah, hours of operation.
Hours of operation, is what I asked you about.
When's the door open?
Oh, I thought you meant when, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
Sorry, I, I, so... More, more, more precise than the question.
No, no.
Hours of operation.
So the, the first, generally, generally the first classes are, there's a 5 AM offering, and that's the, so that people can have their daily, you know, the workout of the day and, and get home, shower, and get something to eat, and get off, onto, onto the road. Generally, there's a 9 AM, so that's maybe a lot of, we, we have a lot of first responders, nurses, that maybe have worked the night before, getting off their shift and are able to get that 9 AM class, or people that have dropped their kids off at school that now have time to get to gym and then have the rest of the day.
So this place would be open from time to time, from 5 o'clock in the morning to 8 o'clock at night?
Correct.
What's the fee for belonging to this organization?
So it's, it, that it fluctuates from location to location. It's primarily determined on the price of, of rent. It fluctuates from 150 to over 200 in Boston.
What would yours be per month?
Exactly, that was my next question. What would yours go to be?
Uh, I'm trying to keep it under $190 per month, so it's 185, and that is...
You're going to have lockup facilities in there, and showers and everything?
Uh, not showers to begin with, that's another permit that I would have to, but that's, that would be an end goal, it's a nice amenity to, to offer. And, yeah, I'm sorry, did I miss a question?
No, go ahead, Phil.
Do you have the, the map of the place?
I got it here, Phil.
Let me put it out so we can look at it. This is building 34 down here, where you plan to be?
That's correct.
This is your parking out in front?
It would be...
How many spaces do you have out there?
I, I'm allocated 25. There are some parking spaces here, primarily the parking spaces are here.
If I were to suggest to you that I've been down there both on Sunday and twice today, and this area that you indicate is your parking lot was completely filled with cars from other operations, what would you have to say to that?
So I met with the manager of the facility. They're going to make sure that those cars are, are not there if I'm going to be using the, this, this particular parking spot.
So where are those cars supposed to go?
Out.
Yeah.
Well, out where?
So if...
I think it's, I think it's, I think this is very important because one of, pardon me, one of the things that we have to look at is circulation and parking.
Certainly, and actually this doesn't make the best option of parking.
It does not.
The bulk of the parking area, and this doesn't even give, give, there's, there's almost a, a second row, if you will, right back here of additional parking, so that...
Are you suggesting that this is striped off as it shows on this plan?
It is, it's incredibly...
I was down there today, and it, it sure doesn't look like it's striped off.
So I was talking with the manager and...
There's a bunch of snow out here, there's a bunch of k-lyne.
Correct. And he did say that it needs to be relined, and he's going to...
So this, so this hasn't already, this is not lined as it sits here on this plan?
And it, and it will be, as, as I understand.
Yep.
Now, in order to get into this place, you either have to go down this way and all around and down this narrow road to get here, or you have to come in this way and, and wind around this way.
Correct.
It's quite, it's quite a project to get in there, isn't it?
I don't see it as, as an issue.
You don't?
I, I...
Have you driven through there?
I've many times, yes.
Yeah, so have I.
Yeah.
And it looks like a big problem to me. The, uh, so you say that these, these cars will go someplace else, but we don't know where?
So those would be my parking spaces.
Now, you're talking about foot traffic in this area. There are no sidewalks in this area, are there?
Formal sidewalks, no.
I didn't see any. These are very narrow places with vehicles and people milling around all the time. People are going to be able to walk from somewhere over here to get to your place safely?
There is, uh, there's a garage door and an entrance here, and an entrance here.
Yeah.
We are hoping to have the main entrance in the back of the building so that people can park in the rear of the building, and make that the primary parking space, and walk directly into the...
And how many parking spaces do you have here that you think you'll be able to use?
I am, I'm allocated 25 total parking spaces.
25 places, and you say that this is going to be at least a 90-member club? Is there any room for these people to park?
A 25-member class would be a, a very large class. Not, people are pretty regular and consistent about the classes they show up to, and they...
So you have to be a member and not as a joint? I, I couldn't just come down and walk in?
We do allow, like a...
Day pass?
Exactly.
What, I didn't hear...
Day pass.
Day pass.
Yeah, day pass.
Like a visitor pass?
Yes.
I, I could get a visitor pass.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that would cost me how much?
Generally drop-ins are, are $20. If you're looking to become a member of what I've offered, a lot of places offer a one-day free trial. I've offered a week free trial. Makes it much more comfortable.
What does that 20 bucks get you? Like a class and then just free range of the weights and stuff?
You, you can hop into the class and then use the, use the amenities. Basically, if you, if you pay the $20, you can stay as long as you want for the day, do what you want. Uh, but then it's also, the beauty of, of CrossFit is that it's, it's group training, but you're getting a very personalized, it, it's, it's not great, quite group training, it's not quite personal training, it's...
Has there been any parking study down, down, down here?
Well, while you're on that question, Phil, let me read this from the conservation...
That's why I raised the issue.
Dear Mr. Malbehal, regards, this is from Algas, the Conservation Commission Chairman. Uh, Mr. Malbehal, regards to fitness facility, there are no issues with the proposed use from a conservation perspective. However, I want to know if a parking study for the site will be conducted to address additional parking needs that may be necessary for this and future businesses on the site. This property has seen tremendous growth with several new and expanding businesses. With this, there are ongoing problems with overflow parking on the edges of the wetlands and buffer zones. This cannot continue. We would like to see a parking plan that would address this problem. So it's not really addressed to you, but it's more to the management company that runs that, but that's a valid question, Phil.
Yep. So has there been any kind of a study?
Not that I know of, and I, I probably wouldn't, wouldn't know, have known about that coming in here. However, this is as important to me as it is to you guys and to the...
Along Mr. Riley's questions, did the management company say that you're, and his questions regarding the parking, did he say, did the management company say 100% that those are your spots and they'll be yours only? Or are they going to be shared? Because I can, I can see where Mr. Riley's lawyer in him comes out and where this is going to lead into a hornet's nest of, you know, a free-for-all down there.
What I know and what I understand is that I would be allocated 25 parking spaces.
With signs?
With, uh, reserve...
Reserves?
Or...
Parking for such-and-such fitness only?
There would probably, the easiest, there are posts back here of, light posts...
The ones in front of the building that Phil was talking about.
Then I could post on, on the wall very easily. And, and again, I, I could just as easily encourage people to park in the back, and again, there is this secondary parking area right back here, that, that this is a much more convenient and...
Right. Go ahead, Phil.
Are you going to be able to compete with Planet Fitness right next door where you can pay $10 a month and have plenty of parking in the big Y parking lot?
Yes.
Think so?
Yes, absolutely.
CrossFit's a different animal.
I know.
Yosse?
Alright.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Brady.
I just, just expanding a little bit on what Phil said. I think his driving point, if it came down to it and it was a deal breaker, would you be willing to put a limit on the number of people per class so you could avoid a parking issue? Is 15, 20, whatever the number we came up with is, would you be willing to put? I know you said 25 would be on the high end.
Many gyms do cap classes for a number, for, generally for, for space requirements within the facility. If it's a safety issue, and it really is a, a, a safety issue for the outside, absolutely. Like I said, 25 people in a class is a huge class.
Yeah, but I, I mean...
15 people in a class would be a very large class, too.
You know what I mean? We, we can, you can have sold out, or you can have one guy show up.
Right, right.
So, I mean, realistically, that's why I'm saying, to get back to Phil's point...
I hope I have 25.
Just, yeah, exactly. I, I hope that is the biggest problem.
Yeah.
The issue is to avoid a parking issue, which seems to be the primary concern, at least for now, would we be willing to put a cap on the number if we had to?
If, if need be, yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Well, I just viewed the site about an hour ago because I just arrived, and I would be concerned about safety. There were no sidewalks. Now, when you tell me people are going to be running around, that to me is they're going to be weaving in and out of where trucks are. And tonight, the parking spot that you said was filled because apparently there's a business down there that runs into the evening. Right, it was, it was totally filled.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then the other parking lot I saw was quite a way down below.
Mm-hmm.
And I find it just, I personally don't want to walk at night from that lower parking lot in the pitch dark up to the building.
We all know about ice.
Yes, we do. So I, I see a lot of concerns, to be honest. So I, I see a lot of concerns, to be honest. I applaud somebody wanting to start a business. I know what it is, but safety to me is a concern, yeah.
So, and I completely agree, right? Originally, when I first looked at the, at the place, there wasn't any snow, there wasn't any ice, it was daylight, and I was considering, you know, oh, we can run around and through all these buildings.
No.
And then I quickly realized that that's not gonna be an option. Luckily, there is so much space behind the building, right? And making an entrance here that the easy, you know, the ease of access to the back end of the entire premise of the whole entire middle structure is the direction.
Try and walk or run every day, and I don't wanna weave around trucks.
I should also say...
There were many, there were trucks down there.
It's a busy place, though.
It's a very busy place.
Right.
To me, safety is...
The outdoor running is just one small aspect of...
I understand it, but even if, you certainly don't wanna be responsible for someone to get hurt by... You know, the trucks, they can't even see you anymore, the sizes they are.
Right.
And I'm sorry, but I really find that a concern.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Perry?
I pretty much have the same concerns. Actually, as a kid, I worked down there.
Oh, really?
When I was going to school. And it's nothing like it is now. It's a very popular area. I'd like to see you have your business down there, but I am concerned, again. You had mentioned something about the parking area, but are they all, none of them are striped, is that correct?
They are, they will be striped.
When?
That's up to the management team, but they, they understand that in order for, for a new business to come in with foot traffic, that those parking spaces will be clearly, need to be clearly identified.
Well, that's where I'm coming from, because I know it's very congested. I'm glad for the people down there because it's worked out, and it used to be basically a bunch of dumpy old buildings, and now it's become a gathering spot, and it's quite popular. But I also know that traffic is, the parking is nuisance down there. Again, that's, I, I'm not opposed at all to what you wanna do. I just would like more information on the traffic.
Yeah, and again, Mr. Riley's concerns and Mr. Getz's comments are very well-founded, and I think we may ask the management company to provide us with something that'll have them come in to...
And I'm wondering, sorry to...
Sure, no, go ahead.
I'm wondering if there is a safety, safety measures that, that you, off the top of your head, I'm not a safety Department of Transportation person, but, you know, they do have those, those mirrors that you can see around the corners. If there's anything that you can think of that we can do, I'd be happy to hear it.
We'll think about it. I think lighting is important, and I can't, I've always been down there in the daytime, and I'm not even sure what they have for lighting.
It didn't look like the whole lot.
The management team has mentioned, time and time again, that he's willing to put in lights for me, for my business internally, and I'm sure externally would be fairly straightforward.
Thanks, Mr. Perry. Anything further from the board? Mr. Brady?
Has he, is the man, I wanna see it happen, to be honest with you. Has the management company mentioned how many spaces he'd be willing to allot your business? Because you could coincide, just a suggestion, you could coincide that with the max number of people you're gonna have per class, and it virtually covers you on the issue of what's being talked about here. You haven't allotted, say you have twenty spaces allotted from the management company for your parking only, you have a max of twenty people per class, then it covers you. As far as the traffic study and all that stuff, I think that falls on your landlord, which I'd like to see it happen, too, with all the concerns, but as far as covering you, I think that would do it.
So, in the lease, it did allocate twenty-five? I don't need to advert, or, you know, I could, you know, it could be the space for twenty-five spaces, and then if it's deemed that, you know...
He's allocating and taking...
Yes, yeah.
So you got twenty-five spaces, so you're gonna limit it to twenty-five people per class? I don't know what more on his part he can do. I do agree with it needs to be looked into.
But are those gonna be designated spaces?
Yes, yes.
Only for you, the twenty-five?
Yes, absolutely.
So that's gonna be in your lease?
Yes. That is in the lease.
All right, Mr. Chairman, following up on the points that Mr. Brady and others are making, it's fine to have them have some designated places, but as I suggested and pointed out in our discussion, what happens to all the cars that we've been there? That we've seen there, they just, and when I said where do they go, the chairman commented where they go out. But the question becomes, out where? And are these people going to adhere to whatever it is that's going on? Or are you gonna have a car war down there because the other people that are there, I suspect, are gonna be saying to the management company, hey, what are you doing? You're giving this guy all the places. What are we supposed to do? Park, you know, somewhere on Endicott Street? I mean, we're, you know...
It's my understanding that, that every tenant has came into their lease with a determined amount of parking spaces. I think that's been very lax.
In that connection, I think we very much need to have what the chair was just talking about, and that is something or other from the management company that clearly sets out what parking lots are gonna be allocated to whom and how they're gonna be enforced. Because there's no question that this is a very crowded, convoluted area. As Mrs. Anderson pointed out, there are a lot of trucks down there. There, as we looked at it, I've looked at it both in the daytime and at night, and there were no obvious places to park other than the ones immediately in front of thirty-four or the back of the building, which were all filled. So, and something's gonna happen to all these K-line things that are sitting out in the back there. Now, I assume they have some right to put their, whatever they are, they look like trailer-type things maybe out there, and presumably the management company's gotta do something with them because they appear to be occupying this area that you're relying on as a parking space. And where are all those K-line things going? Are they gonna throw them out? Are they being parked somewhere else? I mean, the problem is, it's a very limited area, it's an area that's hard to get into. One of the things that we're required to do as members of this board in looking at the decision criteria is that we have to look at, and we have to determine that the adverse effects don't overbalance the beneficial ones for the neighborhood of the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. Well, the particular characteristics of the site are tough. And so I think we very much need a plan such as the chair's.
Yeah, no, I mean, Al's right, you know, because there is some issues down there that need to be...
And of course, as raised by Mr. Getz.
Yeah, I think, I think you can kinda gauge that we're leaning in your favor, but we wanna do it right.
Right.
You know, because it's, again, it's, we don't wanna free-for-all down there. We have opened the door, and it's a very busy place, and getting busier with a lot more possibilities to come, which we all talked about, and we wanna make sure that there's some sort of structure moving forward, so unfortunately...
There's really no assigned parking.
No, I know. That's what we wanna, maybe we'll get that management company in here and then have them talk with you and part of us, so...
But I'm also concerned about the safety of running around that place. That's, that's really for trucks and cars and so, I don't know where the people are gonna run.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, moving forward, I mean, because again, there's a lot more proposal, proposed development down there that they wanna do.
I know, I don't wanna run around here at night.
I know, isn't, but I probably, I probably couldn't run either in the night or the day.
Let's open it up to the audience. Who wants to be first? Mr. Yosko, please.
That's Dave.
Good, thanks. Steve Yosko, fourteen Endicott Street, Tom Meeting, Member District Five. Can I just...
Sure, please, yep.
The building is thirty-four, which is right here to you. And here's Endicott Street coming in.
Coming in.
And here are all the craft places, and it's right there in back. You either get, you either get there that way or you point it out this way.
Was this the old Norfolk County mosquito control?
Uh, I, I thought it was the Volvo or the Saab dealer in the back there, but he was saying it's a Jaguar. I used to see a lot of Ford cars back there, the auto body guy. Right when you make the bend to get in the back of the building.
Actually, this is, this used to be, this is the one that...
It's like a real narrow driveway to get in the back of the building.
So the Harley Heeler is here, and the Jaguar guy is on the back end there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so then this one here used to be Norfolk County mosquito control here, too. So then, now, against the brook here is where College Hunk parked their moving trucks.
I know there was another thing down there besides the K.
They're moving trucks. They're the ones that I'm more wary of down there than anything else because they're the ones that've gone down there, and I told them that their drivers are speeding down the street. But then there's whole parking lot over here where now you're approaching where the fire was, and it's all torn down, right, right. It is narrow space here, and then you have the access that doesn't belong to the Wensmith Commerce Center that crosses over on the Davis Ave.
Crosses over the Davis Ave, yeah.
So, yeah, this concern, I... Because I know College Hunk's parking the cars right against the back of the brook, and they have a dumpster there, and there's all kinds of trash there. I got pictures on my phone here that I can, I can bring up, but that's not his case here. But they should definitely designate, if he's gonna be designated twenty-five spaces.
What about the proposal, Stephen? As I said in the opening, I mean, you've been involved from the start of this thing. I mean, is this in keeping with what you envisioned for the neighborhood?
I wanna know how many days a week that it's gonna be open.
How many, was it five or six, seven?
Six.
Six, he'd open Saturday?
Sometimes it, I...
And it's a lot busier on the weekend than it is during the week.
Well, there's more traffic on Friday, Saturday, Sunday because of the Wensmith being open.
And there are only morning classes on the weekends. Some gyms are open seven days a week, some are open up six, with Sunday being a day off. The only classes on the weekends are an eight and a nine, done, cleared by ten.
I mean, apropos of the traffic, when I was trying to get out of there today, I came by here around the corner. When I got into this area, there was a truck coming in with a trailer and a truck in front of me trying to get out, and they couldn't get out beside each other, so the truck that was in front of me almost backed into my car. I had to blow the horn to keep him from backing into my car, and you couldn't get out. It's a very narrow, tough area to get in and out of.
No question.
If you've got a whole bunch of people coming in there. I keep looking at the bylaw and the characteristics of the site, I'm thinking, I don't know.
By right, I mean, it is a narrow way there, and it's really not two-way traffic in there.
So that, that, I believe that they're trying to make this a one-way, and then you can circle back.
Well, that's why we're gonna get them in here.
I mean, they're almost better off because the roadway is coming in here and then going across and around the back here where it's much more open.
Yeah, of course.
But still, yeah, there's, they, they need a...
Traffic study.
A traffic study, but they also need something, a flow. They need a designated flow down there, for sure, and it's a mishmash down there. Because I still see people coming out where they have a designated one-way going in, but people still come back out the other way, but fortunately enough, they know the buildings, and there's a lot of people, most people go slow down there, but there's definitely issues.
Issues with Noah Commerce Center needing more designation as you guys...
Yeah, no, we're gonna ask them to come in.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Steve, I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thanks, Dave.
Ma'am?
My name is Mary Caitlin O'Connor. I live on Mileman Street. And just listening to the dialogue about this, I just wanted to note, I think respectfully, I shop at Wensmith all the time, I see the traffic, all the issues, but I'm happy to see the growth and development as a Norwood resident that that area's had. And I respectfully would suggest that it might be a little short-sighted to limit the applicant to twenty-five people in a class per parking space because I think if he has only twenty-five parking spaces, because I do think that by nature of this business, there's a new residential community there that would often have pedestrians that come to that area. We also, you know, with smart growth, you don't always wanna have one person per car. There might be, you know, a couple or two people coming in a car to a class, depending on what, you know, the size, and I don't know anything about the size or the civility of a class size, but I just, I would hate to see the applicant, and I have no vested interest, but just hearing this and also being separately a real estate lawyer and a person involving that sort of thing as a resident, I would hate to see him be limited to that where by nature people bike in that area. I know my husband and I both bike and, you know, bike down there to shop and stuff. So I think just the broader context, maybe not tying parking space to class size, would put, you know, the nature of the business and fitness at a disadvantage. So I'd look at it as a broader context.
Well said, well said, thank you. Anybody further? Anybody further? Okay, so I think I'm gonna ask the board to take this under advisement. In the meantime, Mr. Jones, we're gonna ask the management company to come in and have them respond to Mr. Getz's letter regards to the overflow parking on the edges and whatnot, and then maybe get them in here with you at the next meeting and ask them to come in to try and alleviate some of the concerns of the members because, as again, Mr. Riley said, and I know the area pretty well, it's very narrow. It is a hodgepodge of roads, driveways. You've got ten-wheelers. I don't know if that was an eighteen-wheeler tonight. You've got College Hunk. You've got residential cars, you know what I mean? Yeah, so we wanna do it right, not necessarily saying no to you, but, you know, so, I mean, because we want you to, we wanna be business-friendly, but we wanna be able to say, hey, listen, you know, we're not just gonna throw fifteen things down there and let the Yosko get fifteen cars an hour going through there at fifty miles an hour sometimes, you know? That was my biggest fear, you know, if I lived down there and all of a sudden people started popping up and then with the Wensmith and then the day license for the drinking, the entertainment, you know, blah, 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 you know, it could get out of hand real quick, so. But, so just hang tight with us. We're gonna ask you in for the next meeting. Ramonda is the twenty-sixth, no, excuse me, the fifth?
I'm away.
Okay.
They have to do April, is it April that you say?
Yeah, April second? April second's good?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have you back in, Mr. Jones, on the second of April.
Okay.
Is that okay, Ramonda? And then, in the meantime, we'll fire off a letter to the management company. We'll ask Mr. Getz to get more clarity to his letter as far as he, what he's looking for from a conservation perspective, which has nothing to do with you, because he already said it, from a conservation, it doesn't have anything, but it's more of a broad thing for the park. And then maybe we can get some answers to get some structure and cohesiveness to it down there. And then all the while, hopefully pushing you forward.
Thank you. So it sounds like you are gonna notify them of exactly what they...
Yeah, oh, yeah, we'll write a letter. Ramonda, our administrator over here has, you know, the minutes, and she exactly, you know, simpatico here, knows what we're saying, so.
Just file a couple.
Yeah. So do you have anything further, Mr. Jones?
Did I get my, do I need my news clippings?
No, we've got that, that's incorporated into the file. So your, your, the hearing will remain open, and it's continued to April second at seven fifteen. No, excuse me, seven thirty, seven thirty.
Okay.
All right, and in the meantime, we'll notify the management and blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
In the meantime, talk to them, too, you know, and just tell them, yeah, tell them.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mary, to your point, there's a lot more down there that's gonna get developed, a lot more. There's a lot of space down there. But there's no sidewalks, to your point. No, I know, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. Well, that's, exactly to your point.
Was filled because there's two businesses that all the lights are on.
No, it's true, we've gotta do something, that's what I'm saying, you're right. I'm agreeing with you, is that something, if they're gonna develop the rest of that property...
Oh, well, then they've gotta make a lot of changes.
They've gotta have some plan.
Well, it's just overgrown, right?
And if you see where the...
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's way down the back.
Yeah, with the dock training facility.
And then there's another parking lot that, I don't know who wants, I mean, it might be fit to...
No, I know, I know, no, there's no, I know what you mean.
Do we want everybody coming back in and saying, can we be there full-time? Probably will get it.
That's what I'm saying.
He'll get it.
Do we have the authority to order the landlord to do a traffic study?
You see this? Well, no, we could require this guy, that requires somebody to do it.
Yeah, we can require.
See, the applicants...
And that's a valid point, but I think to Mary's point about, you know, safety down there, and if Jack represents five of the parties that wanna go in the other buildings in the back there for whatever, what do you do with pedestrians? What do you do with vehicular traffic? I mean, there's no burming, there's no arrows.
We can't ask the applicant to do a traffic study.
No, no, I mean, it's the management company.
He would only base it on the place he wants to be.
Yeah, right.
No, it's gotta be done by the... It's just really grown.
Okay.
It hasn't grown with any thought.
But things like that, it's, they're not planned buildings.
That's what I said.
Yeah, yes.
I think in the future, that's what's in the plan, where you gotta see some roadway with, you know, future, you know...
Oh, absolutely not. He's an innocent victim, he doesn't know.
Under controlled development.
Yeah, exactly, that's what it is.
Folks, you can all come in, best way you can, there's room over here, there's not many seats, but wanna come in here over to the right of the camera? Wayne, you can grab that chair if you want it. We've got a continuance here, folks, of two fifty-three Manhattan Street, and we're in our original room here. Sorry, we didn't get the hall upstairs, but we've got a continuation for the convent proposal of...
What is the name of the company?
Manhattan Development.
Manhattan Development to redevelop the convent into condominiums that many of you have been to the last two meetings on. At our last meeting, we had some concerns conveyed by a couple of members as far as the residential, flexible residential development clause that was put in the application by Attorney Hearn that some members may have had a problem with. And we also addressed at the last meeting some concerns about... And, um, uh, we also addressed, uh, at the last meeting, some concerns about, um, aesthetics, whether the stone wall in the front would be kept or not. Uh, there was some concerns conveyed by some of the members of the neighborhood that some trees might not, uh, survive the construction. There was also concerns raised that, um, folks were in favor of the development, but maybe not to the extent that it's, uh, um, nineteen units, uh, is the possibility there that you could shrink the development. So there was a lot on the plate, uh, but I think the biggest thing, Mr. Hearn, was, uh, keying in on was, uh, some of the comments made by the members regarding the flexible residential development. So with that being said, Mr. Hearn, the floor is yours and you can start off wherever you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, and members of the board, for the record. My name is David Hearn Jr., I'm an attorney with an office at four seventy Washington Street here in Norwood. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you've summarized, um, some of the matters we were talking about when we were last with you two weeks ago. And, um, I understand there's been some, at least one letter that came in to you, we got a copy of that this afternoon from Mr. Hayes, it's, uh, similar to what we've, uh, read before, uh, from him, and I just think I understand his concerns. You mentioned trees a few moments ago. Um, I have given the members, uh, this evening, a print of a revised landscape plan, um, and, uh, Mr. American, who's sitting here with me, our engineer, uh, forwarded this to me today, and he can explain that the changes, there are some changes there that are, uh, intended to take into account some of the concerns of some of the neighbors, uh, I think particularly on the railroad outside, Dan?
Yeah, we changed a couple of the trees on the railroad outside, uh, from deciduous to evergreen, just to provide some more screening. We also added a fence around, uh, almost the entire site. Um, the only gap would be basically this big ledge outcrop. And I did speak with, uh, the neighbor's representative in the hallway, and they would like us to extend this fence a little bit further behind the Lennon property, and we're happy to stick it.
That was where the seating area was, up on the top of the ledge there?
Correct.
Yeah.
And they also asked that we put some deciduous trees in here, so that as those grow up, they would provide some visual screening, uh, across the top of the ledge, which we've added to that plan as well.
Okay.
You can do that?
Yes.
It'll be broad and aware.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's a valid point, what are you gonna, what are you gonna take off?
We're gonna have to take some of the ledge in there down anyway, so we'll just, you know, we'll just create a couple of spots for the trees.
Like, three feet, four feet?
Deep.
Yeah, then what do you, just put the loom back in there and hope it stays?
You can also mound it, you can do a mounded planting area.
David, go ahead, sorry.
I think, I'll leave it to those folks to figure it out.
Oh, no, yeah, no, I mean-
I, I am only allowed to have artificial plants in my office, I'm not, uh-
You still water them though, don't you?
I know. The water looks really good.
Yeah.
Uh, then you realize it doesn't move when you tip it.
Where do you want, where do you want to go from there, Dave?
Well, let me, let me speak to a couple of things, a couple of the issues that came up at the last meeting. I, I, and I, I watched the tape of it the other night, I happened to catch it, um, late night TV.
Oh, lucky you.
I had remote, I had control of the remote, so.
Turn the volume down?
And everybody else had gone to bed. But I, I thought I heard Mr. Riley say that, um, for nineteen units, we'd have to have ten thousand square feet for each of the units, and I, uh, I, I may have misheard that, but, um, that would be a hundred and ninety thousand square feet, which we don't have. We have about eighty-four thousand square feet here. Um, the zoning bylaw provides that for multifamily dwellings, which are allowed by special permit in this district, which I will remind you is, um, the general business district. Multifamily dwellings are, um, uh, three units or more, and the calculation of area needed for those is ten thousand square feet. For the first unit, thirty-five hundred square feet thereafter. So, for the nineteen units, you do the arithmetic, what you need is seventy-three thousand square feet for multifamily properties. That's the requirement of our bylaw, and we more than meet that with the eighty-four thousand square feet that we have on our lot. Now, beyond that, there was some discussion about dwelling units and multifamily dwellings and the definitions. Any residential property has dwelling, a dwelling unit or dwelling units. Single-family house has one dwelling unit, two-family has two. The dwelling unit is the separate area, abode, apartment, if you want to call it that, that is for one family. Multifamily has three or more. We're proposing nineteen dwelling units under the multifamily dwelling classification on this property. And doing the arithmetic, that's seventy-three thousand square feet. Now, we're proposing it in multiple buildings, which is similar to what you did when you approved the Marini property back in two thousand and sixteen, as to Riley was chairman at the time. Um, that was a development where, uh, the applicant came in and they were looking for actually, I think, a little bit more than what they ended up with, but they needed, uh, they needed a variance relief. Their space, fifty-eight thousand square feet, some, some odd square feet, allows for fourteen units. Ten thousand for the first, thirty-five hundred thereafter. They wanted eighteen units. And this board granted them a variance for that, to get the extra, the four extra units. And that was an exercise of your discretion, uh, taking into account the arguments that were made, the facts that were found, uh, the conditions at that site. We're not asking for that type of relief. Um, we're asking for relief with respect to the lot setback, um, uh, the building setback from the lot, uh, from the district boundary line, because that line runs right in front of our property, right down the middle of Manhattan Street, and would require us to go a hundred and fifty feet back, which would cram all the units into a much smaller space. So we're asking for relief on that. We're asking for a special permit to allow for multifamily, uh, use of the property in the general business zone, because any multifamily use in that zone does require a special permit. As a matter of right, we could put all kinds of commercial enterprises there, an office building, childcare center, those would probably not be as suitable as the residential use we're proposing. Now, when you look at the, the definitions of single-family dwelling and two-family dwelling, they refer to a detached residential building. A single-family dwelling is defined in our bylaw as a detached residential building intended and designed to be occupied exclusively by a single family. A two-family dwelling is a detached residential building intended and designed to be occupied exclusively by two families. Multifamily dwelling is defined as three or more dwelling units on a single lot, irrespective of structure type, ownership or tenure. No mention is made on the number of buildings. So, we've come to you with something similar to what the Marini project came to you with. More than one building on the lot, we conform to the area requirements. We conform to the setback requirements as far as rear yard and, um, side yard go. We have the frontage that's required. Um, we have more than enough parking, we exceed the parking requirements. I appreciate that there seemed to be some concern about flexible residential development. Now, flexible residential development is something that was created a number of years ago. I know it was in the zoning bylaw more than twenty years ago.
Yeah, it was.
And originally, it was allowed in every zoning district in the town. There was no limitation. When the zoning bylaw was rewritten in two thousand and nine, it was limited to general business, limited business, central business, uh, and several other commercial-type districts, not in the single-family or two-family or general residence districts. Um, so this type of use is contemplated, flexible residential development. One of the requirements is that the number of dwelling units being erected does not exceed the number which could reasonably be expected through development on separate lots meeting lot area and frontage requirements. That's the language in the bylaw. We don't have to show development on separate lots, because our use is allowed on a single lot by special permit under our bylaw. If you were talking, uh, if you were in another type of district, and back when, when they, when they revised the bylaw to eliminate those several zones, they didn't revise the language. That language, I think, was more designed for developments in the single residence and general residence zones, where you were very limited as to what you could do. One family or two-family, and that was it. And if you wanted to lay out a neighborhood without having to show a full-blown subdivision, flexible residential development was the way to go. Pleasant Ridge condominium is the, probably the prime example of that. Um, so, this, um, proposal we have fits within that first requirement under four point two point one. Second requirement is that access, drainage and utility service to each dwelling is functionally equivalent to that required for separate lots. We don't need separate lots, again, we don't need separate lots for multifamily. The bylaw contemplates that multifamily is whatever number of lots you get approved on a single lot. Um, I do think that we still can show that we provide adequate access, we provide adequate drainage and utility services for this property. We've made that statement in our memorandum to the board, and we, uh, have heard no question or opposition. I know that the town engineer has looked at this, uh, he sent us a memo today. Um, uh, he sent to the planning board, it was forwarded to us today, uh, that raises a few technical questions, but nothing about being inadequate on drainage, uh, access or utility services. Um, we are going to the planning board next week for site plan approval, and if there are concerns that this board has, you might, you know, we might say, uh, we'll go back and forth between this board and that board on some of those points. The third requirement with respect to this proposal, uh, under flexible residential development has to do with side and rear yards. Both side and rear yards shall meet rear yard requirements, and dwellings on the same lot shall be separated by no less than twice the side yard requirements. Our side yards and rear yards meet the rear yard requirement, which is ten feet. We, we have those, we have more than that. Um, the dwellings on the same lot shall be separated by no less than twice the side yard requirements. Depending on how you interpret that, we may or may not already satisfy that. If you look at the plan that we have before you, the distances, um, let me go to another version of it, are varying between the, the different units. Um, between units five and nine, we've got sixteen and a half feet, but that's only where the back of one is opposite, the corner of another. Um, between, uh, six and seven, sixteen point two feet. Most of these spaces widen, so that by the time you get to the back, you've got twenty-five, thirty feet, maybe even more. Um, and, and so there's certainly plenty of space. The board may decide that it, um, wants to grant relief as to that. But on the questions that were raised the last time, I think we're, and, and looking at what you did on the Marini case, I think what you did with the Marini case was that you interpreted flexible residential development correctly. You interpreted the definition of multifamily dwelling correctly. When you allowed, in that case, two buildings each containing nine units on a lot of fifty-eight thousand and some odd square feet. Now, you did give a variance on that, and you found the variance conditions existed, uh, to grant relief with respect to the number of units, because fourteen was the maximum they could have under the normal calculation of ten thousand plus thirty-five hundred. Um, we're not looking for variance relief with respect to the number of units. We're looking for variance relief with respect to the setback from that line in the middle of the street. And I would argue that in this case, it's very appropriate to grant that, because the idea of a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback is to protect residential uses in the residential zone from commercial uses in the business zone. We don't propose a commercial use. We propose a residential use, there's, it makes no, there's no reason then to require protection of a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback from the, uh, residential zone if what you're putting in place is residential use. Um, and then with respect to that side yard requirement, depending upon how the board interprets it, I mean, the normal side yard requirement in the, in the, uh, general business zone is zero, uh, but if you provide it, it's supposed to be ten feet minimum. The requirement is that the side yard has to be, um, uh, has to match the rear yard, which is only ten feet in our district. Um, we do that, and so the question is, do we have to go double that? Um, and if so, then I think the board should see its way to, uh, granting some relief with respect to that. That's how I see it, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that multifamily use is allowed in this district. There is nothing in the definition of multifamily or in any other provision of the bylaw that says it must all be in one building. The design of this property is designed, it intended to be as attractive as possible. It'd be easy to build a big apartment building there, and we wouldn't be having the discussions, some of the discussions we're having. But it wouldn't be the best use of the site, it wouldn't fit in with the neighborhood. Um, it wouldn't add the value that we want to add to the property. Um, and so, you know, that's why we're proposing the type of construction we're proposing. Now, there are other comments people have had about the height of the buildings and so forth. We have less height, uh, less imposing than what's been done in other things, even the Marini property, the way that was designed. We're effectively two and a half stories, because our third story, our top story, where the, the second floor of the living area, is mainly dormers and roof. It's like a two and a half, uh, story house. Um, as far as the trees go, I, I know, everybody, uh, several people have, uh, commented on trees. And can we save the trees? We've also heard from some of the neighbors asking us to take some of the trees down. They're concerned about some of them that might fall on their property. We expect that when we go through the site, we're gonna have to take some trees down, a lot of trees down, but we're gonna replace them, we've given you the landscaping plan. We're going to have a fair amount of open space. The way these, these units are laid out, and Mr. American, I think, can speak to it more than I can, but they're laid out in a way that makes sense to allow for maximum control of drainage, to allow for maximum open space, um, to make use or to deal with the slope and other soil conditions, to deal with the ledge. I'll leave it to Mr. American to answer those questions in greater detail, but, um, we submit to you that you can authorize this under flexible residential development, that this use is allowed in this district, that it can be the multiple buildings that we propose, and that, uh, the relief that we're asking for is justified and would be reasonable. And following what you did two and a half years ago, whenever it was, on the Marini property, this is in keeping with that. Um, uh, different look, perhaps, but the same idea, a reasonable redevelopment of a site, um, that in our case effectively is bounded on three sides by residential use and one side by an elementary school, not as suited for business as for residential. And that's what we want to do. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to take questions or respond to comments, but I wanted to, um, that's what we've been thinking about, and, and that's our view of, of how you can approach this. Um, and, and after some thought after the last meeting and after watching late night TV.
I've got a letter here from John Hayes, uh, Mr. Hayes is here this evening, I'm gonna paraphrase, I'm not gonna read the letter. Mr. Hayes is, um, this is his third letter, um, dated February nineteenth, uh, is, um, alluding to the fact that he'd like a, um, development that was in keeping with the characteristics of the neighborhood as far as the architecture. His preference would be to wait for a proposal that blends into the neighborhood. Um, but if we decide to move forward, uh, with the, uh, proposal, he'd like units one and two, uh, deleted from the proposal, uh, that would save some trees. He'd also like to keep the stone wall on the hat, and he'd also like units four and six, uh, deleted, again, for the, uh, saving of the trees and, uh, just for more of the aesthetic look of the property. Um, which leads me to my point, David, has there been thought, uh, have you been given any consideration to some folks concerned that this is nineteen units, two, three, four, too many?
Frankly, Mr. Chairman, we haven't heard a lot of comment on the number of units. The comments we've heard in our meeting with the neighbors, uh, that we held back, uh, early in January, and in the discussions, the comments we've heard at these hearings, and the discussions we've had with people both before and after the hearings. And, uh, we're the second-last people out of the building, I think, after some of these hearings, except for Ms. Morgan locking herself.
Bless you.
We hear concerns about drainage and privacy. What can you do about the drainage, and what can you do about privacy? And what can you do about privacy? So, we're responding to that with our drainage system, and with making changes to the landscape proposal that will allow for more privacy, both on the railroad outside and on the back of the Manhattan Street houses. I haven't heard a lot, except for Mr. Hayes, about cutting back units, and I'm not in a position to say to you, we can or can't, not without talking to my client, because frankly, this is the first time that that has, this has been raised in a public forum.
Okay.
I haven't heard that otherwise.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Perry first.
Well, I might be able to help out a bit here, because I think I can perhaps resolve the, the major issue that David brought up tonight, and that is this. I'm still not entirely satisfied that he's right on that. It seems to me that the way the bylaw is written, that it does focus on undwelling units. However, that said, this may be very much one of those cases that be careful what you wish for, because you might get it. It's obvious that they could put an apartment structure in, because that clearly would comply. This being a prime lot, almost in the center of town, I think that would be an unfortunate development to have occur at that site. All of that being the case, I'm prepared to buy into, to counsel's argument with respect to the definitions in multifamily and the number of structures, and there are eight structures and 80,000 square feet, and I am prepared to buy into the fact that that will be adequate, and that the board does not need to require a variance in this case. So, as far as I'm concerned, if I were the major objector, I am prepared to put that objection to one side, and go ahead and address some of these other details that I think you're about to get into at this point.
And I'd be happy to check that off. We probably have a few other things that we'd be, have to check off also, but that's sort of the big one we're looking at. Thank you.
Mr. Perry, the architect.
First of all, I wish the rectory was staying, because I did a full set of working drawings on it about 20 years ago.
Wow.
For the arch diocese.
Did you really?
Yeah. Because they, at that time, they wanted to convert it to residential units.
Yeah. I'm surprised they didn't do something with it sooner, but.
Well, I have those drawings, David. You can only check them in about six months to do them. My concern, basically, I, I think the answer is, it's probably going to be developed as residential property, and I don't have a problem with that. My concern, one of my concerns is, if I remember right, this site is fairly steep going up towards the back, and I'm considering runoff coming onto Manhattan Street as a big issue.
Mr. American can speak to that if you want.
Sure.
Because he's done all the calculations and.
Well, I know, but I know what calculations are, because we work with your father a lot, and we can have figures do what we want them to do sometimes. But I know it's fairly steep, and the grade goes up, so that's one of my concerns. And, and actually, I kind of endorse the project as it's presented, but I think there's some, still some technicalities that have to be resolved. I would think in the mornings, it's tough getting on Manhattan Street. I mean, the traffic is backed up there constantly, and this certainly doesn't alleviate that. It's only created, I think, more so. But I'll listen to the other board members, but I'm very familiar with the site, and I think it's destined to be residential, but I think it needs a lot of attention. And I'm not sure this is the right number. I know the developer wants to get as many units as he can, and I don't blame him, because that's what we do.
And it's an expensive project, when you've got, we're not starting with vacant land, we're starting with having to take down a building that's going to cost a bit to take down.
Preaching to the choir.
Yeah. Good use of choir, yeah.
But you know my concerns, David.
I don't know if you want Dan to speak to that, or now, or not.
No, I don't think he has to. My other concern is coming out of here.
Yeah.
I mean, some of these cars are probably going to wait a half an hour. I mean, this, the traffic is so heavy here, and these poor people, they're not going to put a light in there, David.
No, no, I know, but I think that, I think the answer to that is that anybody coming out of this development is going to learn what the traffic patterns are, and decide which way they want to go. And there's more than one way to go around, if, if in fact, it is an issue. And we're prepared to, you know, deal with that. We expect that the people who would buy these units would, would deal with that.
They will accept it, I think, until they experience it. And I've run into that, because I've done some large projects, and everybody was for it until it got occupied, and all of a sudden, it's, we never can take a left turn, we never can get into the traffic. So, they might have to go up to Westwood and turn, maybe U-turn.
They might have to go over to School Street and down Railroad Ave, or they may go over Maple Street.
I'm just saying, those are my concerns. It's more for that kind of thing. I, I think, in due respect to the project, I think it's, it's a good idea to put residential units in there.
Yeah.
And that helps support the growth of the town in Awkward, you know? Hopefully, we can get some better stores, but.
Well, as you know, I think you've heard the discussion and the argument that to get the stores, and to help the businesses downtown, you need people living near the downtown, and that's what we want to do.
Yeah, and I agree with that philosophy.
And I think you've heard from people at these hearings who've said they would like, they'd consider living there, for the convenience to downtown and convenience to the train station.
But you have to have decent stores in the center of town.
Well, I can't control that.
No, 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 none of us can.
You'll bring the people.
I remember when we had, was it Orange, someplace?
Yeah.
You can buy a pair of socks or a shirt or something.
You should have the Murray's outlet.
No, I never went to Murray's.
Mrs. Anderson.
Well, the last time, I was concerned about 4.2.1 and the flexible residential development, as I read it over and over again. But listening to you tonight, because I want to see the project go, I don't want to be hung up on this, because I think you made some points. Now, I hope this won't affect future development, because I knew, I knew nothing about the Marini project, but it looks like really something that will be beneficial to the town. How, how wide are the roads going in? This is just a minor, because I'm thinking, you say that there's parking before cars, but now somebody has a party, and somebody has a suburban, which is eight feet wide, and the fire truck is 10 feet wide.
It's 20 feet plus the curbing, so it's effectively 22 feet.
So, effectively, the fire truck could get by the big.
Oh, yeah, easily.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, when we meet with, we're meeting with the department heads.
Right.
This week, and when we do that, the fire department sends up usually the deputy chief, and we have a discussion about what you're going to build, where you, you know, what the road's going to be like, what, what the, you know, whether they think there's a problem. They have reviewed the plans, and they'll tell us what they think is a problem. Public Works has already sent, Mr. Ryan has already sent a memo with some comments, mainly about size of pipes and stuff like that, and maybe, I think, something about the driveway, he wants some adjustments on the driveway.
Wants us to widen the mouth of the driveway to 24 feet.
At the front. So, those are things that, that there'll be a little bit of tinkering with this plan, based on the department head's review, and then planning board's site review, which might mean that we show you a slight, slightly revised version at some point. But all of those things are looked at, and your concerns are well taken, but they're also concerns and reviewed by the professionals here in the town who have to get the fire trucks in there.
Right.
Hopefully, they don't have to, but if they ever did.
Okay, and then I really want to protect those neighbors, because you said that you would put in evergreens and so forth, so they wouldn't be looking at the back of the houses.
Yeah, and also, the planning board will, just as this board is talking about landscaping, the planning board, that's often a big concern of theirs, that, and the landscaping plan ultimately becomes part of what would be called the plans of record, so that we have to follow those, and I know they follow up on them. I mean, a couple of planning board members are regularly appearing at some of the projects I've been involved with, and they're counting, counting the trees and checking on them, and they get back at us if, if something hasn't worked out, and we have to.
Well, my favorite thing is worrying about neighbors for the blasting, but I know that you promised there's insurance and everything, so you'd take a picture of every house, so if they even have a minor crack, it will be fixed.
We, we will follow all the regulations, as well as.
Stipulated by state law.
Yeah, state law tells us what to do.
Right.
And we follow that. Otherwise, we wouldn't get the permits to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Mr. Brady?
I'm all right.
Thanks, Mr. Brady. Mr. Riley?
I, I made my comment, because I, I wanted to let counsel know that I was prepared to buy into his legal account to remove one of the obstacles that I had with it.
My general comment, thank you, Mr. Riley. My general comments are for the proposal. I, I tend to agree with David, although we've had our disagreements in the past in a healthy way.
You sound like Dr. Phil.
That's me.
Is that, Dr. Phil Riley? Is that if I lived here, and I come out of the development, and I want to get down to the lights at St. Cathay's in Washington Street, and I see 15 cars, I'm going to bang a right and avoid it. I'm either going to go down Nichols, or I'm going to try and go down Maple Street, I'll go up Manhattan, bang a right at school, down Railroad, I'm going to find a way. That is not going to lend me to hit that traffic down there. I also agree with David that I'm seeing it in my own children's generation. When I was 16, 15 and a half, I couldn't wait to get to A and B Auto to get my driver's ed out of the way, and get the road lessons out of the way, and soon as I was 16 and a half, I'd get my license. A lot of these kids aren't getting their license at 16.
That's true.
They are not car crazy like our generation was, with the onset of Uber and Lyft. It is a new type of environment that we're living in, albeit, I'm not to minimize, I'm not minimizing the traffic that's down there, because I live it too. I live up on Crestwood Circle, and I come down here, I just don't talk. I see 10 lights, hitting the lights at St. Catherine's, I just go right up Maple or whatever, and I avoid it like the plague.
I go down Cottin Street, I haven't taken Manhattan Street in months.
I know. I avoid it like the plague.
Yep.
Not that I don't like going by my church, but it's just, I don't want to deal with it. So, I'll hear from the folks in the audience. If you've asked a question before, trying not to be repetitive, but if you want any new testimony or new questions, please fire them off. I think we, we may have a final plan here that I think we can live with, but let's, let's see what the input from the neighbors are. Mr. Hayes, do you want to go first? I know that you had.
Yeah, I'd like to get over to the plan.
Sure, please. Yep.
Could you give me a hand?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was thinking. Who'd have my back fixed on Thursdays? Having a little.
No worries at all, sir. No worries at all.
Yep, okay. The two things that I mentioned in the letter that I'm concerned about, that apart from the issue of whether I'm, since I live over here, whether I'm totally crazy about the whole scheme, I should have said that my name is John Hayes, and I live at five Maple Street, which is this house over here, which is directly opposite the driveway proposed there. The two units that I wanted to get rid of are this one, which is actually closer to the sidewalk than what was the O'Reddon's house over here. And in most cases, I, I, if this were a single-family or a two-family house being built on the site, it would have to be further back than this from the property line. And even in those cases, where you're allowed to average out the setbacks to the existing buildings on the two sides, this unit and this unit would both be too close to the street. Now, the issue about this one is that it looks as if it's lined up to the front of the house over here, but in fact, the front of the house is that line, and this is a porch sticking out in the front. So, I'd like to get rid of that unit, and also, to get rid of this one, which is exactly where the existing trees are on the front of the site. There are two huge trees there, one of which was at least 30 inches in diameter, and you can't replace a tree of that scale with a new one, and these two are not the trees that are there, but I did measure that the existing tree on the site is exactly on the corner of the setback of that building. So, my suggestion in the letter was two-step process. One is reduce the units from 19 to 17, and weave out these two units. That will avoid having this whole group of buildings stick out into the street further than the existing buildings on either side. In my furthest dream, I would like to, since there are a bunch of trees up in this area here, which are six, which are all at least 18 inches in diameter, I would like to push these two buildings back into part of this green space up here, get rid of two more buildings here, which would reduce the count to 15, and have one open space at the front, and a smaller open space at the back. So, those are my two requests, to get to something which doesn't intrude into the existing neighborhood as much as the proposed plan does.
Mr. Hayes, you're a registered architect, that's correct, right?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, have you done developments like this? Or are you commercial?
My work is all high-rise buildings. I have not done developments myself of this kind, although I've certainly seen a few, a number of them. As I mentioned in the letter, the real reason for my affection to the building design is not the architect's input to it, but the decision to put two cars of parking under the building, which raises it up in the air and makes it unlike any building in the neighborhood. My experience of designing high-rise buildings for developers is that inevitably, part of the problem for the architect is that it has, the initial scheme has to be many floors higher than anyone would like, and then eventually, there is a compromise that takes six floors off the top of the building, and the neighborhood groups are then very happy, and invite the fact that it's still six floors higher than the building, and then the zoning ordinance for the law.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask?
My hope is that there is some leeway in the number of units on the site, and if there is a way to get to either 17 or 15 units, that from my standpoint, it would be a better architectural and urban design solution to not have it project out into the street as a foreign element.
Mr. Riley has a question for you.
Can I ask a question of the applicant, in relation to Mr. Hayes's comments? I can understand that reducing the number of units to 15 might be a little bit much in terms of the economic viability of the project, but, so let me direct this question, if I might. How about those two front buildings and reducing it to 17 and not dealing with 15? Is it feasible to reduce this to 17 and remove those two front buildings to meet Mr. Hayes's comments about the buildings projecting out into the general area of the street and so forth?
I don't, I don't know if we can answer that right now, because one of our principals isn't here tonight. All right, is that something we can answer now?
I think we might have to.
Talk to the others, yeah. I don't have authority to offer that. I understand the concern. I will say, by the way, Mr. Hayes referred to setback averaging, that's not applicable in this case.
I know.
The setback is zero.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
So, that, that's more.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking so much about the legalities as trying to make the project a little bit more appealing to the people in the area, and I understand, I, I understand Mr. Hayes's concerns about the other trees and pushing it back or reducing it to 15, but I also understand that that might be a little too much in terms of the economic feasibility of developing the project, but I'm just wondering about maybe those two front buildings possibly, if it at least reduces the projections out of the street.
For my step, that would be a terrific improvement if you got rid of the two front buildings and came to 17.
Yep.
They can raise the price on the others. Get rid of the first two.
I think that's reasonable.
The other question is whether we can, Mr. American's.
Dave, I got a question from.
But that's not.
This is all trees right here, right? In the front, along Manhattan Street?
Proposed.
Proposed, I know that, that's what I mean.
Yes.
All proposed trees, all proposed trees. You said there's a huge tree here that can't be replaced?
Yeah, there are two huge trees there, which are, I, there are photographs of them in one of my older letters, but at the bottom, bottom right corner of the site.
All right, so let's say you left them there.
All right, so let's say you left them there, and then you have these ones in here too that'll eventually.
Those on the drawings are not the trees that exist.
No, no, I get that, it's all proposed, I get that. But you have two existing trees that are here now.
Right. I can't see anything with them.
All right.
Not that I can see much with them either.
Who's that? Anybody that want to be heard? Oh, David, do you want to be heard? I'm sorry.
Well, Mr. American and I were just talking, and Mr. Fitzgerald has said, we can't answer this question presented that way. I mean, another idea is whether we are able to slide one or two. The building to the, to the.
The right.
Right is farther back. Dan, what's the distance on that?
Sixteen point eight.
Sixteen point eight?
Yep.
And this one is?
Eleven point one.
Okay, so about five and a half feet farther back. And looking at that on that plan, you can, I think you see the difference because of the types of trees that go in there. Question is whether we can slide any of these units further into the site a little bit to bring them back from the street a little bit. I mean, I understand Mr. Hayes's concerns, and, but several of those houses are pretty close to the street, both on his street and on Manhattan Street. We can look at whether we can slide them back. I suspect that the way we're discussing this tonight, and knowing that the planning board will have a few comments, we're not looking, what we're looking at will, now is not necessarily going to be the final plan. There'll be adjustments with the little things here and there. As far as, you know, the area that Mr. Hayes was referring to up there, the larger open area, I think most of that is going to be used for.
Stormwater, stormwater management.
Stormwater management, so that we control as much of the water that is presently just going over the surface.
I agree that it's probably difficult to deal with that area, that's why I was confining my comments to those two front buildings.
Yeah, I mean, but once we start, you know, it's not just, you know, people always say, oh, these developers are making a big profit and all that. It costs a lot of money to do what we're doing.
Of course, I understand the economic.
Without going into any details, the property is not inexpensive.
Of course.
And the cost of taking down the convent is not inexpensive. There's a lot here before we even put our own shovels in the ground.
Let's hear from the rest.
That's why I abandoned the fifteen.
We'll look at it, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I abandoned the fifteen right away.
Go ahead.
Well, I just am concerned, the one here on the left, if that is, could be further out than the house into, onto the sidewalk than the other house? It looks that way here.
It's a couple of feet closer than number two sixty-five.
Okay. I understand the concern for that. But as far as up there, I.
Yeah, I think the discussion is mainly down the front.
Right, but especially that one is, if they could, those two could be moved back, I would think that would be, make everybody much happier.
We can look at it, but that also implicates the issue of space between buildings, so we, this is like.
I know.
Some of these other things where every time you shift something, without realizing you're shifting something else, but we'll go back and look at it.
All right, let's hear some other comments. Anybody else? Sir?
Ward Jennings, two eighty-seven.
Mr. Jennings.
Well, I think we've all acknowledged that there's gonna be a traffic issue with this, and if they do come out and make the right onto Manhattan, School Street is not safe enough to be driving through as a thing. I mean, if we all look at that, we know that's gonna be an issue. Second of all, which, this picture's not three-dimensional, and I did also state at the last meeting that I thought there should be less houses there, but with the grade of that going up, and these houses are gonna be for the top thirty-five feet, I mean, people are down on Railroad Ave, we're all very familiar with that area, to grade that up and then put thirty-five-foot buildings on the top, it's gonna be like the eclipse of the sun for almost everyone on Railroad Ave, not to mention, I mean, the rock will do nothing to stop that. My proposal is if you're gonna come in on Manhattan Street, you need to stay at Manhattan Street level where the houses are there. To take that up to a top level of fifteen feet and then put a thirty-five-foot building on top of that, it's gonna look like a monstrosity sitting up there. It's not gonna be aesthetically pleasing for the town in Norwood. And I also agree with Mr. Hayes that those front two buildings are not gonna be aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood either. So, those are my two suggestions. That's something I really, and I really feel strongly about the grade on how they're gonna raise these up, because I think that it's gonna look awful.
Mr. Chairman, and that, we're not raising the grade. We're going to slope it down from the top down to Manhattan Street, but we're not also going to cut it all out so that it's the same level as Manhattan Street. That wouldn't make sense, and it wouldn't be feasible. As far as the thirty-five feet, these buildings are not going to be thirty-five feet tall, and anybody who says that hasn't looked at the plans. We can, we will conform to the height requirements of the town.
Which is thirty.
It's thirty feet.
The thirty only goes to the top window, there's still gonna be, with the way they say at the roof, it'll be five feet over there. We had an architect in here talking about that the other day.
Well, they'd have to meet, they'd have to meet the guidelines set forward by the town. I hear you, Mr. Jennings.
Even thirty foot on top of that, and you say it's sloping down, it's not, because behind the church goes down, that was the old sledding hill. They're sloping it up, they're not sloping it down.
So, let me play the devil's advocate, would.
Yep.
We say no to him.
No, no.
No, I'm just saying, we say no to this development.
Yep.
Or if we say, oh, we're gonna scale it back to fourteen units, he says, no, I can't do it. He walks. Another developer comes in here and wants to put a square, cube up there, which he can by right. Mr. Riley said something earlier, we, it's an axiom that's been thrown around this board since I've been here, be careful what you wish for, because you might just get it.
As I say, I'm not talking about not having the thing, I'm talking two less units and grading it so it's more of a flat level across.
I got you.
I'm not, I'm not unit.
No, I got you. No, I know, I know, I just, I just wanted to throw that out there, because, I mean, it's.
But the land should be developed, and to be honest, I don't have any problem with their buildings.
Okay.
But I, as I say, I don't want it to be a tower sitting on top of the, the top of the world.
Right. Got it. Anybody else? Wayne?
Hi, I'm Wayne Lanier, and I had a couple of questions and I had a couple of solutions also. I found the surveyor's stamp, which appears on the first house on the left on School Street. There's a hole dug, it's stamped under the ground, whoever surveyed it at that particular time, which I believe was in probably right late fifties, early sixties. And the surveyor's name and everything is stamped in there. If you'd like to see it, if somebody would allow me to use a cell phone with a camera, I'd be more than happy to take a picture of it, because I know the gentleman that lives there, and he would let me do that. Then you know who did what, what happened, this gentleman over here said that he did the survey. Is that not correct, sir?
No, he made plans for the convent twenty-some-odd years ago, because the archdiocese was gonna redevelop the convent into condos back in the day, but it never went anywhere.
Right. The original surveyor, though, was from behind the fence in the first house, not the one on the corner, but the next house up.
I'm losing you here, Wayne. As far as School Street goes, what relevance does it have to the property, though?
That's where it was surveyed from.
And again, I'm losing you here, as far as where it was surveyed from. Does it have anything to do with the eighty-four thousand square foot lot, though?
Oh, no, it does not.
Yeah, correct. All right. And then your point last meeting too, Wayne, and I've got some feelers out too about that possibility of lead mine up there, you know, Mr. Hassanfuss brought it up too, is when they start digging up there, the state's watching them with an eagle eye. If they uncover anything, it'll be dropped on them like a hammer if they uncover something that's under the ground or something that they didn't foresee, and the state will take over and stop them, so would Mr. Schubert too.
I just wanted to say, I'm not opposed and I'm not for it, but my concern is the safety of the children on the school.
Yep.
Is this gonna be done while the kids are in school? Because it could be done during the summer when the kids are not in school, limiting the danger to the children. That's my only concern.
It'll be a continuous development, right, David? Mr. American, I mean, the.
Yeah, we'll have safety fences.
Barriers.
We'll have safety fences. The parish and the school are well aware of what we're proposing and.
Detail officer when needed.
Whatever's reasonably required, we're going to do.
Okay. Anybody further? Sure.
Robert Whiteneck, representing the Reeves at two seventy-five Manhattan Street. Robert Whiteneck.
Yep.
And we had mentioned in the beginning, Mr. American had mentioned that you were gonna extend the fence on the back property, but he said he wasn't gonna go the whole length of that property, and I'd almost like to see, the highest part of the rock is actually beyond the property line, in other words inward of it, and I'd almost like to say, could you extend that along that high point of the rock, and that way it'll block the views from the house itself, because you can see the house, you can see the new building, the roof elevation, upper, upper level and the roof from the house itself, and so if you can extend that, and it's easy, you could pour it into.
Yeah, yeah. Can you do that, Mr. American?
Sure.
Yep.
Just so I understand, you're talking about, and you're with Beals and Thomas, aren't you? Is that right?
I'm, I work for Beals and Thomas, but I'm representing the Reeves.
Okay.
But right now, the fence stops short of the area where the out, and what I'm saying is what you could do is go at the high point of the rock, which is inward of the property, and that way it'll, it'll provide the most buffering, because when you look from the upper rooms here, you see the upper part of the roof there.
The only problem with that, Mr. Chairman, is that people tend to view fences as property boundaries. So, if we have a fence in board of our property, neighbors over time tend to think it belongs to them.
Adverse possession.
That's a concern that we would have.
What about putting it on the lot line?
Put it on the lot line, but it won't form as a buffer as well, because now it's down, starting down the slope. I'm fine if you could put it on the property line, but.
Yeah, sorry, do you understand his concern, though?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
It provides the best buffer, at the highest point of the rock.
And the other concern is that when you have land that's not flat, somebody's always gonna be higher than somebody else, just as the houses that are up that little Manhattan Court, I think it's called, they're higher than the houses in front of them. It happens, but we're certainly agreeable of putting the fence across as we can on the back of that property, but as Mr. American said, once you put the fence somewhere other than along the boundary.
What about some more shrubs, though, sir, instead of?
You would be able to plant shrubs on it, because it's all solid rock. It's solid rock.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's what I asked him earlier, I mean, he's gonna.
Yeah, gotta grow on the ledge.
But that's on the bottom side of, on the ledge, but on the top side, you know, if you could put the fence on the property line, that's fine too. It's just it would be more of an effective buffer if you put it at the highest point of the rock.
Right.
Unless we, can we make a higher fence? If we need, we need relief on.
It sounds like Donald Trump.
You don't want a higher fence.
Higher fence.
But I would say, continue it along the property line to the end of property there.
Well, I guess, I guess you got an agreeable party on the property line, but that's not gonna solve your riddle, and I can understand him as a property owner, I wouldn't wanna, I mean, not that you're gonna use the five feet, or what is it, five feet or six feet in?
Maybe ten feet to the high point.
Yeah, I mean, and it's all rock, but it, what about selling the property?
It becomes a liability question, too, you know, you put the fence ten feet in on the top of the rock, and the neighbor's kids are climbing all over the rocks and, you know.
Well, that was my other concern, is that on the other side of the rock, is that going to be an exposed ledge face, and that could be a hazard that isn't there now, where kids could fall down on the face of that ledge, and so that's all the more reason to have a fence at the top of the ledge.
Well, that's in board to the property, and the association will manage that as they deem appropriate.
But if we move the fence up to the high point, and then we don't have control over what's going on on the outside of that fence, yet we're still liable as the property owners.
What about purchasing the property?
Well, then we're making the lot even smaller than it is now, and I don't know that, you know, we can look at that, but, you know, frankly, Mr. Chairman, my client has asked if we could at some point, and realizes it's getting late too, and there may be others who want to speak, but some of the issues you've raised, we may be able to resolve with a very brief recess and maybe a phone call or two.
We're waiting ten minutes?
On some of the questions you have. I was gonna say five minutes.
Good. Five-minute recess. Thank you.
We off TV?
Yeah.
Okay. If you give us a couple of minutes, we might be able to resolve a couple of the questions.
Chair, do I entertain a motion by Mr. Riley?
I was about to say you need a motion to have a recess.
Seconded by Mr. Perry, all those in favor?
Yes.
And we're back after that short recess, folks. Thank you very much. Mr. Hearn, you've conferred with your client, and we're gonna entertain some more comments from the audience, and then we'll hear you, okay?
That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody further? Mr. Hassanfuss?
Yeah, I don't know if I should save this for the planning board or not, but when you're gonna put the fence up over the rock, at the end of that rock, it gets in a drop.
Drop.
Well, it's not, it's not high, I mean, one side's high, it faces, see, there's a twenty-foot road that goes in from Manhattan Street up to the end of my property, it's owned by the town, it's called Private Way, everybody thinks it's Manhattan Court, and it's not, Manhattan, it's up the Maple Street. Why? Don't ask me why, but my driveway is called Manhattan Private Way, it's owned by the town, it's a twenty-foot road, and it ends at Scannell's Fence, I believe, my neighbor.
Yep.
And there's only two houses in there, Mr. Jennings and me.
Yep.
Now, that twenty-foot buffer between my property line and the proposed property line of St. Catherine's that owns it is common use, it's his quarter rights for over a hundred and fifty years, I use it, I have my front yard, but nobody tends to it, the town doesn't plow it, they don't go up there, they, if it's town property, they should, but they don't. I have to tie a private plow to them, but they've never plowed it. My father plowed it for fifty years, because he worked for the town, he didn't give a damn if you knocked there, he'd be nice about it. But now he's dead and buried, so we have to shovel. But the thing of it is, that, where that road ends, between my house, you know, and the property, you say there's gonna be a ten-foot buffer between the end of the road, let's call it a road, and, and the back of that last unit.
That's what it, that's what it says on the plan, yeah.
Trees in there, that's a pretty small area, ten feet to be putting trees.
Have you seen this house? I mean, that's what, show them that, David. We could give them a copy.
My house, my house would be right.
Yeah.
No, it's fourteen feet to the deck.
Here's the ten-foot, here's the road, that's the road. What are you gonna have, ten feet coming in? Coming from the back of this unit to that border of that road, is that gonna be ten feet?
We're required, no, we're required to have a ten, minimum ten feet, as a kind of buffer between the two properties. We have, Mr. American, I think, can tell us what the, what the measurement really is.
It's fourteen point two to the deck, so it'll be close to twenty to the structure.
Twenty, okay. And you're gonna put a fence along there, too, right?
Correct, on the property line.
And then shrubs, right?
Along there, okay.
Vinyl or wood stockade?
So, what is that shrubbery there?
Those are trees that'll extend over the top of the fence, so those are deciduous trees.
Close to twenty feet from the structure. No, we're required to have a minimum of ten.
And there's gonna be trees over the fence house when they grow, I mean, obviously, they're not gonna be, are they gonna be mature right at planting?
No, no, they'd go in at probably fifteen feet.
Six feet, five feet, fifteen?
Deciduous tree, twelve.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Twelve.
Yeah.
Now, what's this little island here in the middle, what is that? Is that a?
It's just a.
Turnaround.
Turnaround, you see it on the colored plan there.
And is that gonna be trees in there?
We propose to put some trees in there, yes.
Well, my concern was that I was seeing if it was feasible to move that last unit to some, my property, back to two feet backed up, but now that you tell me twenty feet, I guess that's, it's okay. I was thinking if you move that, that little circle, if necessary, or if you want, if you could move those structures a little bit, two feet further in, if it's not gonna, It's not gonna, it'd probably make a difference between the distance between them, I'm sure. So I guess that's not feasible. If you could bring them a few feet more. But twenty feet, I guess, plus the twenty-foot driver, that's a forty-foot, yeah. That's my only concern. And the fence, as long as there's a fence along there.
We'll, we'll put a fence in there, Mr. Chairman.
It says six-foot vinyl or wood stockade. Have you decided?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we've decided, uh, yet. Uh, we're, we're looking at that.
All right.
And we've gotta deal with...
Probably vinyl.
Probably vinyl.
So by the way...
Anything further? Anybody else? Anybody else? Going once, twice, pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hearn?
Thank you. We had a conversation out in the hall, um, our team. And by the way, I should have introduced Derek Fitzgerald as one of the principals and Brian Donahue, who's our architect, uh, here with us this evening. We understand the concerns that people have. And I understand the concerns are privacy. And our response to that is, um, you know, we're proposing a residential use, less intense than a commercial use that we could do as a matter of right. We're proposing to put landscaping, um, around the perimeter, virtually the entire perimeter. And also fencing around as much of the perimeter as we can. And with that in mind, you know, we think we answered the questions about privacy and green space and all that. We will have infiltration, in-ground infiltration to deal with the stormwater, which will be an improvement over what's there now. Right now, there's no control over the stormwater. So we'll have that. And I think that responds to some of the concerns that we heard, particularly from folks on Railroad Ave who were, um, have in the past had problems with water. Although they, some of them have told us they put in French drains themselves and they're, they're doing fine with that. I think the remaining issue that we hear from folks, um, and I, well, Mr. Jennings mentioned the height and the slope and all that. There's not much you can do with a lot that slopes now. And if you're gonna put something there, we can put something there and there's going to be some height. Any, any area that has uneven ground is gonna have one house higher than another. Or an office building, or a child care center, or something like that, higher than the other. So we'll do what we can to provide screening, fencing, landscaping, all that. The concern that I've heard expressed that I think is the biggest concern is the concern about, particularly what we show in our plan as Unit One. And that's the first one to the left as you go in. Mr. Hayes has mentioned that. Um, the question is whether it's, you know, it's a few feet closer to the sidewalk than the next house is. It's closer than Unit Two is. And I think that if we, you know, if that resolves the concerns that the board may have, we could take out Unit One, the first one on the left. We might even be able to slide, um, I guess what we could commit to, Dan, tell me if I'm wrong on this, say a minimum twenty-foot setback from the Manhattan Street, uh, boundary, which puts it farther back than any of those houses along that side of Manhattan Street. And, um, at least as far back as Mr. Hayes is from Manhattan Street.
That's the minimum setback to the adjacent zone as well.
Yeah, minimum setback for, for a, um, uh, general residence zone. So we might lose Unit One in doing that, but if that is what, if that satisfies what I think I've heard as the biggest concern of folks, then I think we could agree to that. And then with respect to Unit Two, um, if we can move that back so there's a twenty-foot setback.
Slide those buildings back a couple of feet.
Slide those buildings so that we can get, commit to a twenty-foot setback from the sidewalk.
To Unit Two.
For Unit Two, the first one on the right.
Right.
Let me stop you there. Let me stop you there. So Unit One goes away?
If it must.
So it's down to an eighteen-unit development?
That's right. I mean, on the, on the land area, we could've gone twenty or more.
And then Unit Two goes back twenty feet?
Well, no, it doesn't go back twenty feet. It goes back to a twenty-foot...
To a total of twenty feet.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so then, anything further? With the pleasure of the board, are we gonna continue this?
It's a quick one, David. If Unit Two...
You gotta continue this, right?
Has a twenty-foot setback, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Then...
Probably better have April two date again.
So, uh, uh, obviously four and six are moving back, too.
They would go with it.
So what happens is I use in that space is what I'm getting at. It looks like you have a little green space here.
Well, either...
Between six and seven.
We'll either close the gap between the, the two right buildings or we'll slide the whole package back.
Well, that's what I was...
Yeah, I think we could maybe slide them back a little bit into that larger open area.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's what I...
We have a little bit of room to play with there.
Because I think that would be nice to keep.
Yes.
And then just move it up.
I think I can slide the whole thing.
If you're gonna do that.
Um, we, we could do that, yeah.
You would adjourn rather than close because adjourning would permit the receipt of written documents or as closing. If it went that way.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would wanna make a suggestion. I think I know what you folks are talking about. I mean, I wonder if the board would be inclined to approve it subject to the filing of the updated plan that shows what we've discussed. And I understand some people are gonna be unavailable for a number of weeks.
And we're also running up against a timeline for, um, when we have to decide on this.
And we're running up against timelines, too.
Yep.
As far as permits and permitting schedules.
Yeah, I was just suggesting that if we were doing something like that pending another plan, we would adjourn rather than close. Because I think if you close, you may cut everything off. But I think if you adjourn, you can still take written documents.
Well, if, if you're inclined, if you're inclined to...
Same deal, but...
But I understand there might be somebody absent for several weeks.
Yes.
Are you saying hold a vote and have as a condition that the plan will be submitted?
I don't think we need to hold the vote. I think we can vote tonight.
That's what I mean, have the vote. Have a vote.
I thought you said hold, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Subject to...
Proceeding with the plan.
The final decision would have to reflect the revised plan that we...
Number one.
Reflects what we're talking about right now.
Exactly, and the twenty-foot setback, yeah.
Yeah.
I know it doesn't accomplish what everybody wants, but, um, I, you know, and again, to this fellow's, uh, point up here with the fence on the hill, Mr. American, we're gonna go, we're gonna go on the property line or...
We, we wanna go on the property line. We'll do the best we can to shield it, um, as best as we can.
Mr. Hassanfuss?
Is that road, is that hill owned by the, the St. Catherine's? Or is that owned by the 279 Manhattan?
It's owned, well, the whole property line, it runs right to the road line, right?
The rock, our prop is split.
The rock?
It's probably two-thirds on the school property and a third on the adjacent residential property.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, he looks that way.
Split in half.
Yeah. Yeah. Some of it's ours, some of it's theirs.
Yeah, it looks that way in the plan.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, folks, I don't think we, everybody got what they wanted. But, uh, at the end of the day, I think it's a decent development for the town and for the neighborhood. And again, I, I don't wanna belittle everybody's concerns that they've made because they're all valid. But again, I think it's, it's in keeping with what we're trying to do here, moving forward and moving the town forward. So I'll entertain a motion, uh, to close the public hearing.
I have a quick question.
Sure, Mr. Perry.
We're not gonna have a revised site plan, is that correct?
We are.
We'll submit a revised site plan.
Yeah.
But, but, I mean, that will reflect the conditions that you're, you would impose of eliminating Unit One and sliding back Unit Two, providing a minimum twenty-foot setback for Unit Two.
And then would we get a revised site plan?
Yes, and, and it would require us to submit that plan before the final decision is released to us.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, fine.
Great. So, uh, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
By Mr. Perry. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Brady. All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing. Now, what's the pleasure of the board? Do I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, plan as presented with the revisions that Mr. Hearn has, uh, offered to the board?
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we'd wanna itemize the relief.
Oh, I will, absolutely will. But, 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 uh, as presented, though, with, um, Unit Number One being eliminated and Unit Number Two being pushed back with twenty feet of furniture to, uh, twenty-foot setback to the, uh, to the sidewalk line.
Well, it's Unit Two and Three, right?
It's that whole building.
The whole cluster there.
The whole cluster, yeah.
Do I hear that motion?
I'll make it.
Mr. Brady will make the motion to approve the plan with Unit Number One being eliminated and the cluster of Units Two, Two, Four, and Six being pushed back from Manhattan to reflect a twenty-foot setback from the concrete sidewalk.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Anderson. All those in favor of Mr. Brady's motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed? It carries five to nothing. And Mr. Hearn, you'll present the board with the revised plan showing the elimination of Unit Number One. And Mr. American is gonna push the cluster Six, Four, and Two back to the twenty-foot setback for the board. And then, um...
All of us.
Mr. Chairman, so we're, I just wanna be, make sure I understand this. Does that, does the board intend that that vote encompasses the special permit relief we've asked for as well as the variance relief that we've asked for?
Well, is it one or the other? Because do you need...
No, it's, they're two different things.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
You need, you need special permit relief to have multifamily in the general business zone. We need relief from the hundred-and-fifty-foot setback. And, uh, we need approval by special permit.
So do you want a separate vote on both of them, David?
No, I think you can put it in one vote.
Yeah.
And, and did your vote, did the members contemplate that their vote authorized, and maybe you ought to specifically call it out, so there's no question on the record, the special permit with respect to the, special permit with respect to the, um, uh, multifamily dwellings in that zone.
Yeah, we'll just do an individual.
With respect to flexible residential development, with respect to the hundred-and-fifty-foot setback.
Yeah.
Um, because those are the, that is the relief. And then included, I think, within that, based upon the board's approval of the plan, subject to the re, the filing of the revised plan that will reflect what we've talked about and what you've just voted on.
That's fine.
Would be also that side yard issue that I raised, that I think we, if you think that's an issue, include that in the relief. Um, as part of what you're granting. And I think if you do that...
And as far as the area is concerned, we adopt your, uh, position that that is not necessary because of the definitions of multifamily.
I think that follows your, your, the, the line of case.
Because that I don't think we could grant. But I think as long as we accept your...
I think you, I think you can, and I think you...
I think it's better to...
I appreciate your, your seeing our way on this.
I think it's better to do it your way.[1626.61]